The Chapel Hill Town Council meetings are brought to you by a grant from Carolina Cable, the village companies, and the town of Chapel Hill.
Asking the manager for an introduction to the general subject. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the last several years now, we have followed a process that involves two public forums. To receive citizen input concerning our budget and our capital improvement program, this is the first of those forums tonight in which we receive information from the public concerning the capital needs of the community. This is the process of developing a new five-year capital improvements program, and not just a two-year program that we had last year, but a full five-year program. The information about tonight's meeting was sent to 177 organizations and individuals in the community, along with the 11 advisory boards, and two notices were run in the newspaper. We think it'd be appropriate at this time, then, Mr. Mayor, to hear from the citizens of the community concerning what they think are the needs of the town. However, before we do that, I'd understood from Mr. Walden that the planning board wished to make a statement tonight, even though Mr. Reimer could not be here, and with your indulgence, I'd like to ask Mr. Walden to give the planning board's statement.
Mr. Walden, if you will come forward, please, and do that in Mr. Reimer's absentee time.
I will. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The manager has outlined for you the process that we're going through, trying to create a five-year program for the expenditures on capital improvements. Planning Board has considered this CIP at its last meeting, and it will be considering it again, but it wanted to offer some preliminary recommendations. As you know, the planning board has been working on the -- for this year, on the update of the town's comprehensive plan, and as a result of several discussions that the planning board has had on the comprehensive plan, there are some items that they would like included in the dialogue and the discussion about the capital improvements program. Number one is the maintenance of sidewalks that have Chapel Hill, what we call Chapel Hill gravel on them. The planning board has -- is asking that some consideration of increased maintenance of those kinds of sidewalks be included in the CIP. A second point deals with trash collection, and the planning board is asking consideration of the -- of several new concepts of purchasing compactor equipment and with an eye toward eliminating the need for dumpsters in many of our areas, and so that is a second point that they wanted considered under the banner of the CIP. A third, the planning board asked that some consideration be given to the whole issue of solid waste disposal and what is going to be done and what the town's position is in the area of solid waste disposal, and asked that that be folded into this discussion. And then their final items were to seek the -- using CIP funds more directly for transportation, utility, and townwide drainage improvements. So those were their preliminary recommendations, and they would like those folded into this dialogue to -- as the dialogue progresses. We also have received, in addition to the citizen requests that are noted in your memorandum, we also received one that I just wanted to call it your attention, came to us on Friday from Mrs. Dolly Sanders, who lives on Coolidge Street, who asks that consideration be given to street improvements along Coolidge Street, widening sidewalk, curb and gutter, and so on, and that the town proceed with greenway plans for the area of the creek in that neighborhood of town. So those are the requests and the ideas we've had to date, and we'll be receiving more as this process continues, but that's what we have so far.
Thank you. I think Ms. Andreessen has a question.
Roger, was there any discussion on the planning board about using CIP money for new bike ways? Was that mentioned in your transportation discussion today?
That wasn't brought up in this discussion that they had.
Any other questions? Which best?
Is the planning board aware of the task force on regional solid waste planning?
Yes, yes, they are.
And are they aware of what the progress is?
They haven't had an update lately, so that...
Do you think it would be helpful for them to have an update?
I do, I think that's a very good idea.
Okay. We'll work that into it.
Okay, good.
Any other questions to Mr. Roger? We'll then move to comments by citizens present concerning the capital improvements program. Now is the opportunity, if you would please come forward and identify yourselves singly and make your statement. Yes, indeed.
I'm Lucy McCarrow. I'm the civic awareness chairman of the Ridgewood Garden Club.
Ms. McCarrow, would you please, could you approach the microphone?
I don't mind the microphone, but I don't like the photographer.
Would you all turn the cameras?
I'm Lucy McCarrow. I am the civic awareness chairman of the Ridgewood Garden Club, and you are my elected representatives. There is a great need on the 600 block of Churchill Drive for a sidewalk. There are 68, we have cased this with the school guard and with another lady. We cased the Colbyth Junior High, we cased Ephesus School, well, which has about 13 kids walking up in both sidewalks on either side of the road. On Churchill Drive, the 600 block, all of Briar Cliff seems to merge into that one block going to Ephesus School. A tragedy happened there two years ago, about two years ago, in which a little girl was picked up and molested and murdered. The other day, a car hit a child. It is very dangerous, and since we've cased all the other schools in this neighborhood and in this town, we hope that you will look into paving a sidewalk for the 600 block of Churchill Drive. I have cased the people on the block and found that three-fourths of them, I didn't get the rest of them, all want a sidewalk on there, and they asked me to tell you that they did tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. McCarrow? Yes?
Ms. McCarrow? Ms. McCarrow?
Yeah.
The 600, excuse me, this way. The 600 block, Ms. McCarrow?
Hi. 600 block?
Yes, that's the one most proximal to the school, I presume.
Yes, yes. Now, we have a cul-de-sac, you see, a cul-de-sac in front of the school and a cul-de-sac back of the school, you know, there, on Emery Drive, but this is between Longleaf Drive and Ephesus Road. Now, all of Ephesus has been paved, all the way up to where Mr. Goof was property, all the way down, and that's been paved, but not this one block. And maybe the other blocks need it too, but this one is tragedy. A child, I watched a child being hit the other day. I watched two mothers walking their children to school because they're afraid for them to walk on that block. Please, I ask you, okay? Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. McCarrow. You may turn the cameras back on. Madam, if you please come forward.
I'll come forward.
Regret the delay, but better late than...
I have a very short statement. My name is Kathy Harris, and I am a member of the Greenways Commission, and we happily accept and thank you for the $50,000 per year greenway budget. We support the $50,000 level for the CIP for the next five years, and we will use this money for greenway development.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Are there others present who wish to speak at this time concerning the CIP? If so, please come forward and identify yourself. Are there questions or comments by members of the council? Dr. Gottschock?
Mr. Mayor, I'm very pleased that we are finally moving to what I would consider a real capital improvements program, that is, one that is based on a five-year schedule and one in which we commit ourselves to carrying out projects on some kind of a planned basis. It seems to me that this perhaps may be one of our most effective tools for growth management in the community, once we get this in place. So I'm delighted that we'll be able to have a tool by which we can compare the capacity of existing and projected facilities, including roads and other facilities, with the growth that's proposed by individual projects. I would also like to just underline something the planning board stated, and that is, I believe that transportation is one of the most important needs in this capital improvements program, one of the most important unmet needs to date, and that we certainly should be moving toward improving our major streets and our coordinated signal system. If we're not able to do that outside the CIP, then we certainly should do it inside the CIP.
Further comments, questions, Mr. Howes?
Just a question. There was a letter in there from Mr. Van Hooi making five specific suggestions. What is the status of that? Will those go into the record, or will they...
Yes, all of those are in the record, Mr. Howes.
Mr. Smith?
My opinion is that we begin, at fun, to provide park ride lots for this town to help ease some of the traffic problems that we're confronted with day by day. It's my feeling that we ought to have a park ride lot in every entranceway to the town of Chapel Hill, if we are concerned at all about the amount of traffic that we generate from time to time. So I think we need to begin planning now for park ride lots.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments by members of the council? Is there a motion to refer to the manager?
Summated.
Seconded.
And moved and seconded, the matter be referred to the manager. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by like sign, matters referred. We now have a second public hearing on a request to close a right-of-way north of Azalea Drive, and once again, we'll begin with a brief introduction by the manager. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this, the purpose of this hearing is to receive comments on whether an unnamed right-of-way north of Azalea Drive should be closed for roadway purposes. This right-of-way is 60 feet wide and is 200 feet long. There's a sketch map in your agenda packet that shows the property in question that is to be closed. We are recommending that if it is closed, that to roadway purposes, that ease must be provided for the utilities. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to hear if there, unless there's additional information from us, we'd just like to hear from the public.
There is no report from the planning board or from Roger at this time?
Not, no, sir.
All right. Then we will ask for comments again by citizens present relating to this particular request. We ought to have a petition, are the petitioners ready to make a petition?
The petitioners are here, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's, we should begin with that. I observe one of the petitioners who is already in place. If you will come forward, sir, Mr. Granger Barrett. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I represent the Lences and the Reeds. The right-of-way runs between their houses, and they petition to have it closed for road purposes. The manager's recommendation of retaining the utilities is quite okay with us. I just want to take one brief moment to explain that the practical effect of this is simply to remove a street setback as Morgan Creek Hills was platted, which just allows them more flexibility in adding in addition a porch, a deck, that sort of thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. And now, comments by citizens present? Do we have any comments from citizens? Are there questions or comments from members of the council on the matter? It's been moved and seconded, the matter be referred to the manager. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter is referred. This concludes the public hearing forum portion of this meeting. We now go immediately to our section on petitions, and the first petition on the list this evening is a petition for a public hearing October 1 on Rosemary Square, and the petition is being presented by Dr. John Graham.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm presenting a petition on behalf of a considerable number of citizens. You have already received the petition informally, and I will read it, and if there are questions, I'll be happy to address them. "We, the undersigned, taxpaying citizens of Chapel Hill, North Carolina, 27514, and the county of Orange, respectfully request that the town council convert its work session on Rosemary Square scheduled for October 1, 1987, into a public hearing on Rosemary Square at the same time and in the same place, that is, in the meeting room of the municipal building, signed by the petitioners."
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions to be directed to the petitioner in the name of the petition or member signing it? Ms. Andreessen?
Dr. Graham, I wondered if you thought that there was adequate time for as many citizens as possible to come to this public hearing, given the short amount of time between now and October 1?
I can't, I don't know that I can speak to that. Certainly, if there's longer time and more advertising, there will be, there will be more opportunity. There's not very much room. I doubt that there'll be many empty seats, even on this short notice.
Is it correct to say, Mr. Manager, that the, an arrangement has been made with the cable vision for the televising of this particular public hearing, should it occur?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would state that this way. We have made arrangements to televise the meeting.
The meeting, whether it's whatever it is.
That's correct.
At this time and place as set forth. Any further questions to Dr. Graham?
I'd just like to comment that we, for the last two weeks, the petition's been on the field, and certainly the publicity that was received through the paper, I think this has been advertised quite enough, and I would like to refer this to item five when we talk about the resolution that the mayor have on the agenda.
And moved, there's second.
Second.
And moved and seconded, the matter will be put in item five, at which time a resolution is available, and disposition of the petition will be then made at that time. Thank you, Dr. Graham. The second set of petitions by citizens who wish to speak on various agenda items that you already have before you, if you will please raise your hand and indicate your name, I will attempt to get these down in some kind of order, so that when we do arrive at the particular, I will then attempt to call you. If I should inadvertently omit your name, be sure to let me know. Yes, sir, the gentleman in the back.
Yes, so I'd like to speak to item 12C.
And your name, sir?
Miles Fletcher.
Miles Fletcher, to 12C. And then, are there others? Yes, sir.
I'd like to, just to be able to address any questions that may arise about item eight.
Item eight, and your name, sir.
Richard Edens.
Richard Edens, on item eight, in the event of questions thereon. Are there other persons present who would like an opportunity to speak regarding a given subject as we come to it? I take it there are none. Are there petitions or statements by citizens on other matters that do not appear on the agenda? Yes, sir. If you will identify yourself, sir, and indicate, or for that matter, first of all, if you'll identify yourself and indicate what the subject is, we might be able to deal with whatever it is now.
Yes, sir, my name's Brian Bailey, and I would just speak on the noise ordinance.
On the noise ordinance. Is there any objection to having Mr. Bailey, who I understand is president of the student body, come forward and address briefly the noise ordinance? There being none, Mr. Bryant, if you'll come forward. As you know, there are two committees, and the president is on one of them. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I don't really have a petition tonight. What I have is more like two requests, and I kind of want to explain both of them. The first is that the ordinance that we have right now was passed in February, and along with that ordinance that was passed was a provision that after a year, the council would look at the ordinance, look at the problems that had come up, or the way that the ordinance was solving the problems, and then consider what changes should be made. Now, I'm sorry. We in student government feel, felt that that out, that that year-long process was too long, and that we hadn't had sufficient input the first time, and so we submitted another proposal, and it got failed or whatever. But two committees were created that, whereby we'd be able to speed up this process. However, we feel like it's not going fast enough, and so my first request is that the council, which proposes this committee, make sure that the committees are going along and take an active interest, first of all, and make sure the process is going faster, because that's the whole reason that we proposed the committees in the first place. It was our understanding that by the first football game, we would have a new ordinance on the table, ready to be proposed, ready to go, and it's not like that right now. My second request is kind of related. It seems to me that the council right here thought that it was a great idea that we established these two committees, and that was really the way that we should do it. However, I'm kind of scared that I'm going to spend a year in these committees and bring up a new ordinance from the committee that the students like and maybe the townspeople like, but that it still might get failed by the council, because the council's not taking an active role. And I'd like to ask that at least one person from the council be on each of the subcommittees so that they can monitor, be a liaison to come back to the council, and let's start having some, you know, reports every other meeting or something like that, so the council themselves can keep up on the issue of the noise ordinance, and so they can know the progress that we're making. I think it's very important if we're ever going to reach a compromise between the two sides. Those are my only two requests.
Mr. Howes and Ms. Andreessen, you continue.
I think that Mr. Bailey's concerns are well-placed. I don't certainly feel informed about, about the work of the committees. It does seem to me that they were well-designed for their purpose, but if they're not, if they're not meeting, if they're not active, we ought to know about it. I wonder if we could have a meeting, a, an item on our next agenda, reporting on the status of that work, and with the ability on the part of the council to take whatever actions it feels necessary to, to proceed.
On that point, Mr. Howes, I spoke to the president this afternoon and assured him that if, if a liaison with council members won on each of the committee, I explained to him that our major problem arose at the beginning, when we didn't have anyone on our group except ourselves, and that we were attempting to involve everyone else, but that I certainly would be perfectly happy to name a, at least one council member to sit with each committee. I understand the need for rapid action, especially with student government, the terms of office being only one year. If, if a typical committee lasts as long as some of ours do, we could easily be in a postdoctoral situation very quickly. So if there's no objection, I certainly would propose to do that. Ms. Andreessen, I believe, had the remark.
I had nothing to add. Thank you.
Can I have a couple more comments?
You may.
First of all, I don't want this to reflect on the committees right now, because I know I've spoken with Kelly Clark, who is a student, who's headed, who's heading the monitoring committee. He says that he feels that committee's going well, and we certainly feel that our revisions committee is going well, too. What I'm asking more of is just that we can kind of speed the process up and get council people involved. I think at least one council person on each committee is necessary. I think more would be great. I think if everyone here is on both committees, that I would be very, very happy.
I was also delighted to be informed that the DU's have, in fact, without even so much as our awareness of it, apparently gone through our staff and obtained a necessary permit for their annual major function involving the Red Cross, and there apparently was not any barred door or other overt threats made, and the thing issued. Now, this, of course, had nothing to do with any...
It complied with the current ordinance.
And we also appreciate the fact that you did change the time and did agree to terminate it a bit earlier, and I think that that's the way we should be going. Any other person who would like to address message or statement to the president of student body while we have him here right now? Yes, sir. Mr. Pasquini?
So much in the dark. We do receive minutes. As a matter of fact, there was a set of minutes we received last week on the committee.
Okay, great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
So could we schedule, and I am to discuss this next...
It's perfectly fine. We'll do that. We'll put it on the agenda for our next regular meeting to see how things are coming. But hopefully, by then, we will have had at least one other meeting of those committees and get an update. Our next home game, I believe, is noted as something like October the 3rd or so. So we should have some activity. Any other citizens who wish to speak on matters not on the agenda? Are there petitions by members of the council?
I just have...
Yes, Mr. Thorpe?
IMC, which we had one person. Are there anyone else who'd like to speak on IMC, under 12? Will it drive stop regularly?
We had Mr. Miles Fletcher. Anyone else? Were you anticipating that someone else might be?
Well, they're probably watching at home, but the, if there were some other people here, I was going to move that that be moved up.
We're here, we don't feel compelled to speak.
Oh, okay.
We would like Mr. Fletcher to speak for us, but there are several of us here in the audience.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the council, with the will of the council, I would like to move that up to, just after the resolution, acting for a public hearing, which would be 5C.
You wish to alter the order of the agenda to move 12C following item five...
Right.
Following item five. It would then become 5SubA, formerly 12C. Is that your idea?
Yes.
Is there any objection to...
No.
There being no objection, sir, we will do that. Are there petitions this evening by, by either the manager or the attorney?
No, sir.
No.
The next item on the agenda consists of the minutes of September the 14th. Is there a motion to adopt?
Summated.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion, emendations, or otherwise to the minutes? Dr. Gottschock?
Mr. Mayor, I, I thought in the discussion that we had about the septic tank regulations, there was considerable input from the public on that, and did I just miss that somewhere? I, I find the, that we did call the public hearing, which is accurate, but there's no, no backup.
Page 17.
The public comments will be at the public hearing, but there were also, there were some comments about these regulations at the time that I found helpful and useful.
Any other, is that satisfactory? Any other comments regarding the minutes of September the 14th?
There's a spelling error on page 11. Nade is N-A-D-E and not M-A-D. You got it.
Are there other changes? Hearing none? Did we move to approve? Is, and we've seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, by like sign. The minister approved item five as a formal resolution redesignating the council's October 1 work session on Rosemary Square as a public hearing. This is Resolution R1. I express my willingness to have it introduced and put on the table, and at this time, I will entertain a motion regarding this resolution. Is there such a motion?
No.
Is there a second? And moved and seconded, that R1, which would change the title and thus the format inasmuch as it would broaden the discussion of that meeting into that of a public hearing, be approved, is our discussion. Ms. Andreessen?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss this item a bit. What, what does the council feel the purpose is of the public hearing? Would there be value in determining what, what should be the purpose? Would there be value in determining what, what should be the purpose of this hearing? And are there some specific questions that we should address if we have a public hearing? If we should have one, some of the questions that I would like to have addressed would be what changes, if any, the public would like to see in this project? Would they like to see it at a different location? What would be an acceptable amount for us to pay to not go through with an agreement? I would, I would like to try to define what it is we're dealing with in this public hearing rather than just ma, make it completely open-ended. Is there any comment on this by the other council members? And in addition, I guess I'd like to say that it certainly would be an empty exercise if we're just allowing the public to come, comment and it really makes no difference to, to the council because in the end, the councils, the, are the ones that have to make a, a decision. We're the ones that are elected to make the hard decisions. So I have that question, too.
I could undertake... Excuse me. Go ahead.
I, I heard your comment this morning on the radio about that, Ms. Andreessen. Why would you think it wouldn't make any difference? We haven't heard what the public has to say first. Why would you just arbitrarily think it wouldn't make any difference based on what the public has to say?
Well, it would be helpful to me if, if you tell me that it would make a difference to you, for example, since you voted in favor of the project.
It'd always have made a difference what the public say and, you know, that's the purpose of having a public hearing.
Well, then, if you're telling me that it would make a difference to you, then...
I'm not telling you anything. I'm saying we, we are asking for a public hearing and it always makes a difference when you have a public hearing based on what the public say. That's our purpose of serving, listen to the public.
I can answer a portion of the question. I wouldn't wish to answer that portion. The original idea was to have a work session. Now, presumably, the work session would go over what has transpired or not transpired in the past 16 or 18 months. I believe that was the way it was put before the council. And I found myself, while I didn't ask for it, I found no objection to it. I think it's worthwhile. As a matter of fact, I recall that the last words I remember hearing were those of Mr. Werner and Mr. Pasquini, I believe, and also Ms. Andreessen and myself saying, "Let's have a, let's have a public hearing." And as I recall, it was indicated at that time that we'd heard enough. And so time has passed and now it comes back, not as a public hearing, but as a work session. Now, the thing that struck me immediately about that, and I had no objection to it and I did, in fact, vote for it, and the vote was, in the absence of Mr. Pasquini, it was five to three. How he would have voted on that, I cannot say, but it was five to three to have the work session. The problem with having a work session, something for which Councilmember Andreessen did, in fact, vote for, is that it was going to limit whatever the discussion should turn out to be to the members of the council and to those designees of the council that it might please the council to include. Now, I think that the ultimate consequence of that was foreseen immediately by Councilmember Werner when he said, "Well, where are we going? What does this, what is this for?" And it's a very good question when undoubtedly, I suspect, we'll have 100 people here and I imagine we might have 1,000 people watching elsewhere, that the idea is not to hear us chew over this matter and deal with old material, but to have any new material come and I suspect that there might be considerable amounts there that expresses, and mind you, this is not anything adjudicatory, this is simply a public meeting, would be a much more apt description, in which all the public has an opportunity to speak, if it so wishes. Now, based upon whatever is heard, then I think is the appropriate time for the council in its wisdom to then do what, if anything, it wishes to do relating to what it has heard. That might very well mean nothing at all. It might very well mean something at all. And that, to me, is the justification for opening it up. I think it is, I better not use that word because it's used so often to describe me. It is, would almost be arrogant for us to purport to have you listen to us and not give you an opportunity for us to listen to you back. And to me, that is the difference. Now, how it will come out, I do not know. If I knew how it was going to come out, we could write the script now and we would need not, we have to bother with the whole process. Well, we're not quite that good. So I answered that portion of the question. If you're going to talk at all, then all of us should talk together. That's the whole nub of the matter. And I think that was a spirit which was involved in, once again, bringing up a subject which everyone here knows has never been entirely disposed of, although all legal matters pertaining to it have been terminated. This is a matter of local people talking about a local project among themselves and I hope that no one will attempt to try to make anything out of it that it is not. It is simply that. That's the kind of lowest common denominator way of saying it, but I think it's truthful. And I don't believe that anyone can be hurt by the truth in the matter. Ms. Andreessen?
Mayor Wallace, are you proposing, then, that after this public hearing, that the council consider this matter again as an agenda item or as a work session?
I am not proposing that we do anything. I'm simply saying there will then be an opportunity that we might be in a position to do something. I said that twice. I am not proposing a blueprint before first we have heard what we are asking to hear, one way or the other. Does that not answer your question?
Sounds very open-ended to me.
Well, are you objecting to things that are open-ended, per se?
I guess I would feel more comfortable voting for work session if I knew that we would be considering this item again.
You mean it.
Well, if we were, if we were, if we, after the public hearing, the council would then
sit down and talk and say, "This is what we think we should do."
Ms. Andreessen, the council in its wisdom may wish to consider it again, but to suggest that the council will consider it again before it has considered it the first time, it seems to me, is a bit premature. Mr. House and then Mr. Smith.
Well, I'm in the happy position of being able to endorse Mrs. Andreessen's idea on this, which wasn't hers but mine in the first place, and that was that we have a work session. But my view is that, that the public hearing is, is obviously desired by a large number of people. One can't help but be impressed by the large number of names on this petition. And I think they, as the council, are not only desirous of being heard, but I think they also want to be educated. I think they'd like to know exactly what the facts are regarding the town's options, opportunities, liabilities, and so on. And that was my view of what the work session could accomplish, that it would allow us an opportunity to hear presentations from the staff and others involved in the project as to exactly where we are. Now, I still think that needs to occur and I would hope that that would occur now, following the public hearing. I see no harm in, in hearing from the public on the matter and then following that with the kind of discussion that we had earlier scheduled. I do think it's important to follow the council's tradition of handling complex matters in a very careful way and discussing them in a work session format in a public meeting, as work sessions are, before being led to, to the necessity for taking action. We've done that on any number of complex items and this is certainly one of them. As I said, when we last discussed this, it has been a long time since this matter has been before the council and since the council's had any substantive discussion and that we could all benefit from. So I would hope that the sequence that we could plan here would be one in which we would have the public hearing later this week and I would look forward to hearing from not only those who are so strongly opposed to the project, but it is my certain knowledge that there are people in town who are strongly in favor of the project. And I would hope both would come forward and state why and that we'd have a chance to hear from both sides. The council would have a chance to quiz them and then, then we would have a chance for this kind of work session discussion. Not, not on Thursday night, mind you, but another time.
Mr. Smith was recognized next.
Mr. Mayor, Member of council. I asked the question, what for? This council, some months ago, made a definite decision, regardless of whether it was 5-4, 3-5, 3, or what have you, to approve this project. The project, of course, was held up because of litigation. We had several public hearings, I believe, on this project prior to that time. I think it's at the point now where the integrity of this board is at stake if we go back and start over again, because that's what we'll be doing. We'll be starting all over again, going through public hearings, which we've never done on an, on, on an item. Had a second public hearing, I don't believe, in, in my tenure on the board over an item like this. Once the council voted, regardless of the vote, that vote stood. Now, we are asking, if we want to, if we are not satisfied with, with the project, then the time to, to vote, to express that dissatisfaction was at the, at the meeting in which we approved it. I think we are opening the door for a serious consideration, serious matters, serious things to come up on this project if we begin all over again, like you're proposing. You must remember that possibly, and I'm not sure because I haven't been through it, possibly, some of the people who, who signed this petition were the people who were involved in, in the litigation, which the courts have already decided on. Now, are we going to, is it, is it our purpose to give a second chance for another litig, a suit against it, which could possibly be? We're talking about a whole lot of things it could be, but it possibly, possibly could be. I, for one, will not participate in another public hearing on this project because I think it, I think that my integrity is at stake when, when I open the barn door again, much less this board's integrity. Because we don't do, that's, that's not the way I feel to do town business. And this is town business and I don't think that's the way to do it.
Did you have your hand... Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Preston, did you have a comment to make and then Ms. Andreessen?
Yes, I guess I did. I've listened to what RD has had to say with great interest because I've had a couple of people speak to me, citizens speak to me, feeling much the same way and so, so it puts me in, in a sort of difficult position trying to decide what to do about this. I always like to hear from the public and I, I feel like it's been a long time, really since the matter's been before us. If we do go on with a public hearing, whatever way we vote, I would hope that we would get some factual information from the manager at the beginning of the public hearing that would set the tone so we'd all be coming from the same place, at least. We'd know what the traffic numbers were, what, as Julie said, what it would cost if we decided to change our mind, a number of things that, that we might ask the manager to give us at the beginning of that, that public hearing. So I would like to listen to the rest of the council's opinions about this and, and decide how I feel.
Ms. Andreessen?
I, I like the idea, Nancy, of starting the public hearing with, with the presentation by the staff and, and having some of these questions clarified and I think that's what, John, you were, you were saying earlier. I think that would be a good way to do it.
Mr. Vally, for what purpose do you rise?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have a word to say before we start to determine the discussion. I would like to make some people aware of just the, the layout of Rosemary Square and how it all began and so on.
Mr. Vally, we, this is, can only be done with the unanimous consent of the council at this time. I think it would be otherwise not in order if we permitted that. We are eventually going, I think, this evening to vote on whether we shall have a public hearing. I, that's what the motion on the floor...
I certainly hope you have a public hearing.
Well, thank you, sir. We will, right now, we're discussing it amongst the council and we believe the next person was Dr. Gottschalk who wished to speak and then Mr., Dr. Pasquini.
I find something to agree with in most of what's been said so far. I think that certainly the mayor's comment, that what we were looking for here is perhaps new material. New material is the most telling comment of all. That is, I would be uncomfortable coming back to hear the same old arguments from the same people that have been amply made on this subject. I think we have hashed and rehashed this thing. We know where people stand. We have chosen upsides. People have clearly stated their position. So I would hope that what we're providing here is for new insights that might help us in determining how we go forward. I also agree with Mr. Smith that we are not in any position to start over. We have come a long way down the road. We have invested a great deal of effort and of taxpayers' money in, in getting to where we are today, so this is by no means a chance for, for a clean slate. I agree also that the, the opponents have had their day in court. They've made their position clear in a number of platforms and I think it's very unambiguous and, and very straightforward. I, I believe that most people in the community are aware of that. So if we, in fact, are able in the hearing to get to some new material, if we are able to hear from people perhaps on the other side, those who are looking forward to the possibility of a project with a large public plaza, with ample parking, with handsome architecture in the downtown and that we will be able to have a civil proceeding in which these people will not feel intimidated to put their views forward and, and also I agree that we should have the beginning factual statements. That is, we need to know where the project stands, what it provides. I would like to know how it compares with other downtown projects which have come along subsequent to its planning and design, many of which resemble it in, in a number of fashions. So I believe that those would all be important factual things for us to come forward on. So while I don't feel that this substitutes for a work session and I agree that we do need a work session, I think have, were we to have a public hearing on that basis, it could be perhaps quite a useful one for us.
Thanks, and Mr. Doc Pasquini, please.
Well, once, like you, David, I, I agree with parts of what everybody said, except for maybe RD Smith, who I generally disagree with, most of his comments.
Naturally.
With all due respect. I feel that, I wish we had this public hearing a long time ago and as a result, I'm glad that we're going to have it now or hope that we do have it now. And also, I, I think we need the work session. I mean, if I was here the other night, I would have voted for the work session. I still want to have the work session, no matter what the outcome is at the public hearing, if we do have a public hearing. The only thing that truly concerns me and being in a number of public hearings over the last six years is the format and I'm not sure how we can actually get to what Jonathan was saying, a... And I'm not sure how we can actually get to what Jonathan was saying, a communication between the council and the different presenters, for and against, and I guess neutral. Opening statements are good, but I'm afraid they're going to be rehashing a lot of old history that most of us are very familiar with. And I think this is such an important issue that we need time to get into the bloodstream of it, and to decide what, as a council, we want to do with the project, if it be anything. And that's what I'd like to hear some ideas on. David made one. If it's possible, perhaps we can have more of an interchange, almost like a combination work session-public hearing, so that debate can be channeled into vital aspects of the project rather than philosophical beliefs. And then, the council can get together within a week or two of the public hearing. I wouldn't want to wait any longer than that. And then we can decide and try to gain some consensus as to what this council wants to do.
Thank you. Dr. Werner, did you have any comment you wish to make?
No, I will continue to listen, and something is not good said.
Mr. Stark.
I'll make my statement.
Mr. Smith?
I think all of the things, if you're looking for new stuff, since you said you were looking for new, can be provided this council without a public hearing. I think the manager and his staff, along with the developer, can provide you with anything you want to know, if there is anything new. There shouldn't be anything new, because we haven't approved anything new. We approved the project as it was submitted to us. As far as we are concerned, that's the way the project would be developed. So there is nobody providing or working on anything new for this project, since the project was approved by this council some time ago. So I don't expect to find anything new, even though we may look for it. But if we do, we certainly don't need the public hearing in order to find out if there's anything new with it. We can get the same figures that we had before. If you don't have copies of it, then I'm sure the manager will supply you with copies of everything that's been said on Rosemary Square from the beginning up until the present date, so that you can decide whether or not there's anything new to be added.
Anyone else who wished to make a comment? Mr. House?
I'm not sure that I can divine the consensus on the council yet about whether it wishes to have a public hearing. It would appear that it wants to talk some more, except for Mr. Smith. And it would like to do it in a work session, and I think there's a general feeling that, yes, it would like to hear the public. It would certainly like to hear the staff make a summary presentation at the outset that tells us where we are, and what, if any, options there are available to the council now as to how it should proceed. I guess that says to me that there probably is a consensus around the idea of having a public hearing, and perhaps we should think about what format it should take, whether any limitations should be placed on the presentations. I think the questions that Julie put about what she wanted to hear, you know, what the specific objections are, do they relate to traffic, or construction techniques, or congestion during construction, congestion after construction, design features, and so on, it seems to me those are the kinds of focused remarks that would be helpful, not just they don't like it or they do like it. We know that, that there are people out there. I'd be interested in knowing whether there are people who think we could in any way format the public hearing so that we get that kind of useful insight.
Any further discussion, Mr. Werner? Dr. Werner?
My feelings on having a public hearing on the Rosemary Square issue are probably well-known, and I won't repeat them. What concerns me a little bit in listening to the discussion is that I don't want us to decide something tonight which is going to mislead people. Clearly, people who are going to put the time into speaking at a public hearing are going to hope that the people to whom they're speaking, this council, will listen and will perhaps have something of an open mind on the issue. My concern is, from some of the comments I've heard, that perhaps minds on this council are not that open on Rosemary Square, and the public may be lecturing to deaf ears. I hope that's not the case completely. And I would hope, therefore, that, perhaps we can do it in this discussion this evening, that council members whose minds are somewhat open, or perhaps still have some questions, might give the public some indication of what they would like to hear from the public. I'm not sure Jonathan's suggestion that we break this down into all the aspects of the project and have people talk on them are going to be terribly helpful, because I'm not sure that that many of us are open-minded on every single issue about Rosemary Square. I would hope, so that we don't waste the public's time, don't raise expectations that something's going to happen, that we can give the public some indication of what kinds of things we are interested in hearing from them, which we can then use in our discussion. Because I think, you know, this gets back to Julie's original point, what are we going to do after a public hearing or after a work session? I would hope we are going to do something besides just talk about Rosemary Square. I think we would then owe it to the public to go on record one way or another, and not just have a public hearing, have a work session, and not address the issue again.
We don't have that choice.
Yes, Mr. Thor.
I often get calls at home from time to time on people asking you, how are you going to vote before you get to the meeting? And I consistently say this to the reporters and all, that you can't vote until you get to the meeting, and there's no need to indicate. I don't know what Julie and I keep crying for when the public have asked to come to speak on this project. Let them come and talk. Now, we're not going to make no decision. Yes, I have consistently voted for Rosemary Square, and I still think it's a good project. But I have nothing wrong with people coming and talking, and they might come up some new ideas and some other innovative ways to do it. Now, you're not going to get from me or anybody else, I don't know why you keep saying, please tell the public whether or not you're going to vote or change your mind on Rosemary Square. That's what it sounds like. And I'm so glad to have cable TV, I can hardly stand it, because the people out there can listen too and see.
I think that however we come out with a public hearing, should we have it, I fully believe it will serve with its freshness, at least, of having heard it. Some undoubtedly will be repetitious, it's inevitable. On the other hand, some might very well be new. I concur with Dr. Gottschalk. I don't believe that we should beat a dead horse forever if there's nothing new to be obtained. But I think that what we do here, and however we run it, and I would hope that we would have those who wish to speak actually sign up when they come in, and that we limit the amount of time, so that we are not going to be here more than four or five hours. I was being very conservative when I said that. But the idea is that it would serve us well to set the stage for then getting down to a much more fundamental view of it, should we then decide to have a work session. We would have heard from the public. We might have a better idea of where, if anywhere, we wish to go, other than where we now are. And that at that point, many of the specifics that have been put forward here could be addressed in a much more fruitful way than it would be likely if we tried to accomplish all of it within the confines of a rather large public meeting, which is not the best kind of place to accomplish the things I would like to see this thing accomplished. I want to see this council, as it goes forth in this project, make sure that the council understands what it's doing, that the consensus is clear, and that we have gone the extra mile in educating the public to every extent that we possibly can before any action is taken. Now, I know that sounds so very simple, but I think it's essential, and time has certainly, a lot of time has been lost. And if there are no real severe desires to speak...
There he is, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
You mentioned the matter of beating a dead horse to death. Now, Mr. Mayor, the Supreme Court of the state of North Carolina killed that horse. Now, I don't see why we want to resurrect it, first place. Second place, you, as well as the other members of the council, set out as one of our policies early in this project, that we wanted to educate the public. Now, the developer, the council, and everybody concerned with this project had all kinds of meetings to educate the public. Now, if the public is not educated to this point, I don't think we can educate them anymore. You understand what I'm saying? For that reason.
Yes, sir.
We have signed, I don't know how binding or what, the item that the mayor pro tem signed in your absence, not in your absence, but in your refusal to sign the agreement, but nevertheless, it's been signed. Something for this project has been signed and approved by this council. And I don't think we ought to go back and resurrect this dead horse that the Supreme Court of this state killed a few weeks ago. Now, if there are people in this city who are not satisfied with this project, then they might appeal that decision to a high court. But as far as this council is concerned, you have voted by a majority vote of this council to approve this project. I hope we won't resurrect this horse, since it's already been killed.
Mr. Smith?
And all due respect to the citizens who have signed petition, and I'm not saying this because I'm not running for council, I'd say the same thing if I was running for reelection, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Because that is the way I feel. And I just don't feel that that's the way to do town business. And I think the citizens of this town, a large portion of them, appreciate the fact that that is the way I feel, and that is the way I continue to vote, in the interest of good town government. And I don't think it's the interest of good town government to start over this horse again.
Mr. Smith, there are very alert legal ears within this room. And the very last thing that this council should wish to do, or should do, would attempt to be, to make a critical analysis of the North Carolina Supreme Court. So far as I'm concerned, that has absolutely nothing whatsoever to do with this proposed public hearing. Because if it did, I think it would put at jeopardy many of the people who would be talking. It is true, that chapter is over. It is finished. But it is not true that this council is proscribed from discussing town business as the elected representatives of the citizens of this town, with or without judicial action. And that is the issue that is before us. And once again, if there is no objection, I'd call for the question if someone were called for it.
Call for the question.
Question's been called. All those in favor of establishing a public hearing on the night of the first of October at 7:30 in this particular hall, please raise your hands. Eight. All those opposed, please raise your hands. One. The matter is carried. Thank you for your indulgence. Yes, sir.
Can we speak to what the agenda would be for this public hearing? Perhaps if we spend ten minutes now, we could save hours on Thursday.
Mr. Dr. Pasquini wonders if the council would concur in a brief discussion at this time concerning a bit of format analysis concerning this proposed public hearing. I see no objection whatsoever to it, but I would defer to the membership of the council for a brief discussion. Dr. Gottschalk?
No, other than our normal proponent-opponent.
A couple of things occurred to me. One is that I think we should set aside thirty to forty-five minutes at the start for a factual report on the project that would be organized and made for us by the manager. Secondly, it occurs to me that we may want to let people sign up well in advance for particular time slots to speak. If, in fact, your estimate of the duration of the hearing is accurate, people may not want to sit through four hours in order to wait for their five-minute presentation, and so perhaps we could say, well, you'll be on between nine and ten, and you'll be on between eleven and twelve, and so forth, and let them sign up for a particular time slot. I know we haven't done that before, and it may be too complicated, but it might be one way to allow people freedom.
It can be done. Mr. Manager, I suppose we can have a table set up and attempt to... My major problem here is to establish a maximum permitted amount of time per person. It seems to me that that's a good place at which to start. And also, the business about repetition. If we're going to start that, then we're here until dawn. Yes, sir. Mr. House?
Just a couple of thoughts on it. One is, I think these things do tend to take care of themselves. We saw this in the hearing on the university's therapy plan the other night, where people came and were asked to limit their remarks to five minutes, and others who had heard what they wanted to say in advance didn't get up and say it. And so I think it worked to pretty much take care of it. It seems to me, too, that there are two principal sides to this argument, and both those sides are reasonably well-organized, and it might behoove both sides to organize their own presentations for, say, thirty minutes apiece, something of that sort, and with as many people as they wish to squeeze in that period of time, and then let the discussion flow beyond that.
Any further comments about how to proceed? It appears to be agreed that perhaps the manager could possibly pull together as much as possible for an overview for the first thirty, forty minutes. Now, that, of course, is not as easily done as said, I realize, Mr. Manager, and it's a burden.
No, sir, it is not, and this is Monday night, and you want the agenda tomorrow, before the work session or the meeting, the public hearing. I got it now. It's a public hearing on Thursday night.
Yes, sir.
Certainly, a thirty-minute presentation, a reviewing of facts and raising issues and so forth is no problem for it. But if you're wanting comparative analyses, that I heard someone asking about, comparing this project to other projects in downtown and all of that, no, I don't think I can have that for you as an opening statement. I would think, based on what I'm hearing from you, that we would have the public hearing, we would, we, staff would start out with an opening statement, reviewing the basic facts, kind of refreshing everyone's memory of where we are, that we'd have them hear from the public, pros and cons, and then, I think I'm hearing you say that then you'd want to follow that up at some later date with a detailed work session. I'm assuming that if there are issues raised at the public hearing that you want to have investigated, that you would then refer those to us, and we could, in fact, investigate them. If one of those issues is a comparative analysis of traffic between Project A and Project B, we can do all that, but I need more than, more time for that kind of analysis than between tonight and tomorrow. But the general kind of things I can have ready for you. If that's, you understand, if that's what you're asking for, Mr. Pasquini, then, yes, we can start out with a general overview, then hear from the public, then if we had a work session later to answer all your detailed questions, or, you know, however you want to proceed from that point, I'm certainly not suggesting it. We'll be prepared.
I think that Mr. House has put his finger on it when he says that these things tend to resolve themselves... to resolve themselves as the hearing unfolds. People who have heard what they plan to say simply do not say it. I don't think we're coming here just to hear our own voice repeat. And that, as, not questions occur, that is the obvious time for you to, we'll take good notes so that we can get answers to those by the time we get into some work situation, should that eventuate. And in that, I think it's necessary to play it by ear to a certain degree. I'm not proposing that. I think that that is, obviously has its limitations, but also, equally limiting is a blueprint tried to be made out in advance, so that they do not often work.
Mr. Mayor, just for composing the agenda, if that's the question Mr. Pasquini is asking, we'll start out then with the first item being a brief presentation by management and staff of, of the facts and issues, and kind of refreshing memory of no more than thirty minutes, and then we'll allocate the rest of the time that you want to have to, to the public presentation. Is that what I'm hearing is, is your choice?
And would the developer, then, would you present their portion of the...
No, sir. We would present just for neither side, just the facts.
The developer, they chose to come, but then have five minutes to take.
As you will it.
Well, I just want to make that clear right now.
Now...
I feel confident, they are citizens of the community on both sides of this. I see no reason why we should distinguish between them if they have something they wish to say that is relevant to this purpose. If that is the case, then we will leave this and go to Mr. Thorpe's proposal that we take twelve to see, which is the will of drive stop regulations, Ordinance O three. Mr. Miles Fletcher and also some other people are present. Will Mr. Fletcher come forward? And we'll have that item at this time. Mr. Fletcher?
All right. Thank you very much for moving the item up, and in deference to your long agenda tonight, my remarks will be very brief. We're pleased by the town manager's report recommending the stop signs at the intersection of Willow Drive and Spruce Street, and we think that the recommendations for sidewalk improvement on Willow Drive are very good also. We have two concerns regarding the sidewalk improvement. One is that construction will not begin until the spring. We think the current situation there on Willow Drive, where extra asphalt was laid earlier this fall, is very dangerous. As I mentioned before at the last meeting, cars may well not realize that the extra asphalt is supposed to be a sidewalk and not part of the, an integral part of the road. We think that the report here, the recommendations for changes in the sidewalk, in a way recognize the dangerousness of the current situation, and we hope that, and we urge that, the improvements be done this fall rather than in the spring. We, we don't see why this dangerous situation should continue. Secondly, the neighbors hope that serious consideration will be given to constructing some kind of pedestrian bridge over the creek in that area. There is a narrow bridge, it's dangerous for pedestrians. I believe about fifteen years ago, a young child was killed there, hit by a car. And our concern in regard to the sidewalk and the bridge is that never happen again. So, we hope that you consider moving the construction up on the sidewalk to this fall, and that the town consider building some kind of pedestrian bridge there over the creek so that pedestrians will not have to go over the roadway on the bridge.
Any questions to Mr. Fletcher regarding this matter?
I have a comment.
A comment, yes.
Which, I, I drove by there the other night, and you're right, you really cannot see where the road and the sidewalk differentiate. If it's not possible to construct the sidewalk as rapidly as Mr. Fletcher requests, could we at a minimum, you know, stripe it with fluorescent paint so that in fact when you're driving there, you can in fact see that there is an area that is not, you know, not a vehicular area? I mean, that was one of the things that was very difficult, was to in fact see where the road ended. So even, that, that sounds like something we might even be able to do immediately, even if we can build the sidewalk in a couple of months, but just some marking there so that one can tell that that's not part of the roadway.
That would be an improvement. However, we would like to make sure that this improvement will be done, and...
Well, you've got a commitment that it will be done.
Okay. But the sooner it's done, the less anxiety we will feel about that.
Yes, Dr. Pasquini?
I'm sure the sidewalk will eventually be done, but I'm not sure about the bridge. And I don't think we're acting on that tonight, so I just wanted to make that clear. What we have in front of us is strictly stop signs and sidewalks.
All right. Well, I, I hope the town will give serious consideration to some kind of bridge, or however engineers deal with that kind of situation.
Any further comments?
I just wanted to ask the manager when he expected that this improvement, these improvements would be made.
But in, in the current schedule, it was, to get back to this, it would be spring. I've heard what has been said, we'll take a look and see what we can do to get it done quicker. Heard Mr. Werner, and I think we can do some striping and do something like that fairly rapidly. And, and I think we can be very responsive to these requests. As to the bridge, I think Dr. Pasquini is correct, and, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request, I realize we already passed that particular item, to, to request that, that the clerk included that as a part of the CIP request, so we'll consider it as a part of the CIP program. I think it's very appropriate to be considered that.
Is there any objection to the inclusion of that in the CIP, which we've already passed? Hearing no objection, will Kirk make note that it is to be so included in an appropriate and timely fashion? Yes, Mr. President?
Several things about this. I, I drove out there, too, and I, I didn't quite understand why the whole thing was built the way it was in the first place.
Neither do we.
But, given that, I want to understand what you're saying about the pedestrian bridge. The way the sidewalk is now, it comes up to the bridge that goes, that carries the cars over the road.
Yes, and then it, then it ends.
And then you have to turn as a pedestrian and walk in the road over the bridge.
That's right, yes. And we would like some kind of arrangement where a pedestrian would not have to do that. Either the bridge could be widened, or, or there could be a, a separate little pedestrian bridge. I really don't know how, how that could be handled most effectively and, and most cost effectively and safely, but something that would not require pedestrians to go out into the road where it narrows down to just two lanes.
Mr. Manager, I understand from the information we have that you're, you're trying to make an improvement that is a temporary improvement in anticipation of widening of the road at a future date and a concrete sidewalk, is that correct?
The, the long-range plan would call for that street to be widened and have curb and gutters, and to have a concrete sidewalk. And this would be, is considered to be a temporary sidewalk of asphalt, just as the sidewalk along a large portion of Estes Drive is a asphalt sidewalk and considered to be temporary.
But the temporary one, you're gonna change and move away from the road and have a grass, meat, strip in between?
Yes, the permanent, the, the permanent temporary solution would be to, to have a separation, yes.
A grass separation. And one of my questions was, if for this permanent temporary solution, there're gonna be some trees that will be sacrificed?
There will be some trees lost.
Would, would it be possible to take those trees and plant them in the grass medium? As a further safety precaution?
I don't know. I don't know how large these trees, we can certainly take a look at that, yes.
Okay.
Any other?
Well, I heard Art, I heard Art suggest a meandering sidewalk, but I didn't know.
That was possible to say.
Seems to be popular around here a few months ago, is that right?
Mr. Thorpe?
It struck me so hard, but I had been asking for this sidewalk for more than two years, and we talked about the capital improvement, and Mr. Wallace, thank you very much for that, because I had thought to actually, the petition to speak at that time. There's one tree between there, I walked it, in fact, I started bringing the pictures that I took of, of that, and it's been very personal to me, because I got these forms from people asking questions from the lines of neighborhood, all these various groups who asked, you know, to fill out these things, and it's very hard to get things changed here, and they're actually, what you're gonna do on the council, and that's, I wish I did know how many yards there were from that street down to that bridge. And then we come back and we get this type of sidewalk, with the same kind of problem that I have with the light on Pitts Pharaoh Street, which we had to go through over and over again. And I just feel that we can go ahead and put a sidewalk down there, that'll be safe, and we don't have to wait until next spring and probably somebody to get hit, or this time, because all the people that drive down that road is not listening tonight, they don't know that we are waiting for some type of action. And yes, I, I am offended by it, and I, and I feel, and yes, if somebody wants to say that I'm taking it politically, yes, because I think we should have a sidewalk down there, some other people need a sidewalk up on Churchill as well, but I don't see why in the world we keep getting the runaround on this, Mr. Manager and Board. And so I would ask that the board approve tonight that we would have a sidewalk there by December the fifteenth, and, and the instructor managed to go ahead and do it. We have some pretty weather between now and December the fifteenth. And you know how long I've been asking for this, I mean, this is not the first time. And it's one tree.
Any other?
So, don't get in the back debate between cutting the tree down and saving lives. No, 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 I know, but it, when you read this here, Nancy, I know you used to say that, but it does, it should be entered into it. I make that motion adopting all three, because we need those stop signs there, adopting O three with adding in there that we would have the sidewalk by December the fifteenth.
You've heard the ordinance O three as amended with the time. Is there a second to the motion? It has been seconded, it, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I understand what Mr. Thorpe is saying, but I think it'd be much more appropriate to have two separate motions, that is, to amend an ordinance, to put that in an ordinance is, is not, you know, a traffic ordinance is not the proper place to put it, and it would be more appropriate if there'd be a separate resolution on that item.
Is it agreeable to the maker of the motion and the second to withdraw now if you will make the original motion, Mr. Thorpe?
On the original motion, best drop next spring off of there, so that you won't get confused, that that allows, Mr. Manager, the way you asked that the sidewalk will be done by next spring.
Doesn't necessarily create the same problem?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Thorpe, really, if you just act on Ordinance O three, that has to do with the stop signs. Then, then any motion that you wish to make, I think, would be in order as relates to the timeliness of the sidewalk, whether it be spring, fall, or whatever you wish.
I move adoption of O three.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Discussion on O three. All those in favor of O three, say aye. Opposed? Is carried. Now, we already have some oral commitments made by the manager concerning striping on an early basis. Now, what additional resolution is to be made at this time?
With the help of the manager, I'm asking that we set December the fifteenth as a time that a sidewalk will be put out there, and let him draw the type of lane that he needed to put in there to get the sidewalk done. He can do it any way he wants to, as long as we get a sidewalk there by the fifteenth of December.
Second to that. Discussion on the supportive resolution relating to the sidewalk by December fifteenth. Dr. Pasquini, Dr. Godstoke, and Dr. Werner.
You know, I want the sidewalk, too, but I also feel if the manager says that he can work it into his schedule and get it done with great expediency, then that's the way I think we're gonna go. I, I don't see that we need to set a date. If he can't get it done by December fifteenth, then maybe he should come back to us and report that I can't do it by December fifteenth, what do you want to do, free up some money? But I don't want to set dates, that's why we have a manager to organize and make sure that projects like this get done.
Okay. Now, all night of that forum, when you come over there and tell those people that when they start asking about the various activities of the council members, we have the right to ask that, and we can set dates, maybe you don't understand, that we can set dates. I want that sidewalk out there by the fifteenth, and that's part of setting the policy. The manager will, can do that, so don't, I'm not out of order in asking for that, Dr. Pasquini.
No, I'll just be glad when the election's over.
The election is, maybe you will be, maybe I will, too.
I don't recall that you are... What is the wish of this council? Let us move on here one way or the other, Dr. Godstoke and Dr. Werner.
I just wanted to ask a question of the manager, and that is with respect to the scheduling of this. I, I agree with David Pasquini that I don't want to put an undue burden on you, and I think if we could take some safety steps in the meantime, we don't have to, to pin you down if, if that's something that's not going to be workable or feasible, or is going to be not effective for you.
Mr. Manager?
Well, obviously, it'd be my preference that you not tie us down, and, because it is, it is important to have some flexibility. We're moving now, doing some side work on, on Columbia Street, and it just means I gotta pull off of one project and go do another one, but you know, it can be done, and we'll get, if that's the general sense of this council, it'll be done by December the fifteenth, it'll be done by December the fifteenth, and you don't have to tell me but once, and you've told me.
Well, I, was basically my point, I think the manager's heard us, and I'm not sure we need to pass a resolution giving him a date. I, I think the message is fairly clear.
You want to scrap the resolution in its entirety and rely upon the manager to get it done as quickly as he can?
I sound very tempted, if you hadn't worked only two years, Mr. Manager, I mean, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
No, I'm talking to you.
Could I make one fifteen-second comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That, I think this project differs from other public works in one respect, and that is the town made a mistake, and it has to rectify it. And I think that makes a little bit of difference in the timing that's involved.
You say that accelerates...
Yeah, that, I think that's a reason why the town should accelerate its action there, because it made a mistake, and it should rectify the situation.
We, well, we actually, I was asking, could we just depend upon the manager, but if someone insists upon it, Bush is on the floor, and the deadline's been set, and the manager says he can meet it, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Fletcher.
Thanks very much.
Okay. I'm, I'm ready, if, very well. Resolution requesting joint public hearing with the Orange County Commissioners and Carrboro Board of Alderman on a proposed new joint planning agreement, R one point one. Dr. Godstoke?
Let him, let him say his piece.
After many months of intense negotiation, the intergovernmental work group has come to a meeting of the minds, no small feat. And I asked the council tonight to recognize this achievement and to join with me in calling for a joint public hearing on the proposed agreement with the county and with Carrboro. This hearing may not have all the appeal and heat of the Rosemary Square public hearing, but I think in the long run, it may affect us in even more important ways. So, I hope that we have your support. You found at your place when you came tonight a redraft of Resolution R dash one point one, which had an improper title on it before, and it simply should be requesting a public hearing. We're not asking you tonight to approve the agreement, but to hold a public hearing so that you can hear the public before you, before you act on the agreement. And this date would be either October fourteenth or October twenty-eighth, to be chosen by the county commissioners. Carrboro has already gone on record as supporting this, and I believe that the county will as well, and I would like to move our point, R dash one point one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion is in order?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
I don't like necessarily to pass a resolution with two dates on it, that does not allow those of us who have planned, scheduled, to plan out schedule, I will be out of town on the twenty-eighth, I'll inform you now, if it's scheduled for the twenty-eighth, I will not be able to attend. If it's scheduled for the twenty-eighth, I will not be able to attend. When you say the fourteenth to the twenty-eighth, I think we ought to be specific in our recommendation to the county commissioners rather than leaving it open.
The twenty-eighth is also trying to daylight. It seems to me unlikely the commissioners will stay in that meeting that night. The fourteenth would seem to be the more likely of the two.
We could certainly express our preference for the fourteenth, given those conditions.
So I would, I would ask that the twenty-eighth be deleted from the resolution and leave it at the fourteenth.
Agreeable.
As far as, as far as this board is concerned. Now, the county commission may see different.
Tends to violate our spirit of joint decision making on the intergovernmental work.
Why don't we list them in order prior?
I think perhaps if we could say our preference was the fourteenth and our fallback would be the twenty-eighth. It may be that the county may have some problems also with that. Carrboro has willing to meet on either of those.
So long as we, we, we know that there's some things that are happening on the twenty-eighth that we feel that take priority because I will not be here on the twenty-eighth.
Is it agreeable that we will include the two in that relationship? All those in favor then of the R. hyphen one point one with the reference to the choice of dates, please say aye. Opposed, by a like sign. This resolution, yes?
I just had one small point to make, Mayor Wallace. One of the, the things I think it would be good to put on the agenda at some future date would be a discussion of whether this intergovernmental group should continue. And I don't propose to discuss that tonight and I would like that to come back on a future, as a future agenda item because I think there's some important things that this agreement haven't solved and I think it would be very good to have a formal group to deal with some of the problems dealing with the watershed and the development of rural buffer.
Thank you for your observation about the future of this joint group. Any other comments before we move on to the next item? Yes, Ms. Fletcher?
Just a word of appreciation to our three members on this committee, Dr. Gottschalk and Ms. Sanderson and Ms. Trous. They've really done a splendid job in keeping their cool, their level heads and working toward a very difficult agreement with two other governing bodies and I think we should offer them our congratulations.
Considerate, well, why don't we give them? Well, to have survived through this as long is a matter not of inconsiderable importance. We'll now proceed to item six. We're identifying areas for proposed rezoning, which will be considered at a public hearing on November eighteen. This is R. two. Planning Board and the manager recommend adoption. There are seventeen items, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Roger? I would like to request that the council add an eighteenth item, which I will briefly attempt to explain the reasons therefor. We have been debating for some time, discussing at least for some time, the possibility of the business of rezoning, what is commonly known as the Merritt pasture, which as you know is, is some thirty acres. It is adjacent to fifteen five oh one and the new bridge out there and also is adjacent to the Duke Power Station subdivision, as substation. And we have been, well, it's been a long conversation. What I would like to do is have it get into the apparatus of our rezoning process and get it to some attention by our staff and also by the council as we are considering these others with a view that it is now zoned, R. one. And if you don't object, I would like that you add this area to the list to be considered at the public hearing in November. Consider zoning to O. I. two. And it says here. And we will go on from there. It's, it is a complicated matter, but it's one that I think we should consider. Is there anything that I misstated about this at all that needs further, further elucidation over there, Mr. Manager? No? No? Yes, Dr. Gottschalk.
Is this, oh, I note that all of the other recommended changes have been to the planning board and been reviewed by them. Is this, has this one gone through the regular review process? Would we be somewhat out of order in sort of getting it into this group?
I asked Roger that and perhaps he would like to respond to that question.
No, it, it would not be. What we did was to go to the, we, the staff went to the planning board earlier this month and asked that they look once again at the, at the list of areas to be considered at the public hearing and they have made their recommendation. On what, they have not made their recommendations on any of these rezonings yet. They've just made a recommendation on what areas to be put on the November public hearing. We expect to take to them at their October long range planning meeting, a set of memoranda that would recommend rezonings and that it would be at that time in October that they would be making their final recommendation to you. So it fits in, it can fit in the process.
Dr. Werner?
Roger, let me close you there. How did the original areas for consideration get on here? I noticed some areas here that I've thought about. Well, I noticed there are some areas I've thought about that are not on here. I just wonder how we got this list of seventeen areas.
Okay. If I can, if you'll indulge me, I'll try and go through in about two minutes, the background that led up to this and how we got where we are right now. Go back to the land use plan that the council adopted in nineteen eighty-six, in July nineteen eighty-six. At that time, we discussed with you that we would, we would think it appropriate to make changes to the zoning atlas to reflect the land use designations on the land use plan that you adopted at that time. So that was in July of eighty-six. Then in February of eighty-seven, we came to you with a list of properties that, in the staff's opinion, had carried a zoning designation that was not entirely consistent with the land use plan designations that you had adopted in July. At that time, the planning board, and so we asked at that time that you call a public hearing on this set of properties. The planning board at that time asked that, that public hearing be delayed until later in nineteen eighty-seven so that additional work could be completed on the comprehensive plan. We have been at work, we this time, being staff and the planning board, have been at work on the comprehensive plan and we brought that same, we brought that same list back to the planning board in September along with four additional requests that we had received during the summer, new items that had come up. So we had that list of twenty-one areas that come to the planning board a couple of weeks ago and they looked at those and thought that there were a number of areas of land use, in the land use plan where they were not entirely comfortable anymore based on the work we've been doing on the comprehensive plan. We, in the memorandum here, we used a shorthand version, called those gray areas where we, where we, in working with the planning board, felt that there might be some additional study needed on what the land use plan says. The planning board felt strongly that those properties that were in what they called those gray areas should not be rezoned or considered rezoning at this time until that additional study was done. They thought that the project, that the properties that should move ahead into this public hearing were those which were either pressing needs or very clear inconsistencies between zoning and land use plan or citizen requests or other requests from other individuals, organizations that had come requesting that items be considered in this comprehensive rezoning, as long as those weren't in those gray areas that they were, that they had identified.
Yeah.
So, so then, so that, that's where the lists had come from and then a couple of weeks ago, the planning board voted to recommend to you that this be the list of properties that's considered for the public hearing.
Okay, what, thanks, but in addition, what prompted my question was, I guess noticing that we have three or four recommendations that were generated by neighborhoods petitioning for them. My question is, how well has this process been publicized? Clearly, there are some neighborhoods in Chapel Hill that are much more politically aware than others and I don't know that the word has gotten out all that much to perhaps those other neighborhoods that are not as aware and there may be other requests that people just don't recognize they can make. What happens, getting into the process a little more, if we have, we have a public hearing on this, I assume it's only on these seventeen or eighteen areas?
Yes.
What is the option for people in other neighborhoods who will presumably find out about this once we get into public hearings on this? Then we'll start getting some publicity and what's the option for people to say, well, wait a minute, what about my neighborhood? I think there ought to be a zoning change there as well.
I understand the question. The process is that an application can be made for rezoning. Any, any, any citizen, any resident, any property owner can request a rezoning. So I would think that the...
But that's, but that's a formal process where they have to pay money and go through all that. I mean, this is, this is very different. I know what the conventional rezoning request is, but I guess what bothers me about just this list of eighteen is we're saying, okay, here is the grand rezoning we're going to do and we're going to pay for it and we're going to take care of everything. If another neighborhood or subneighborhood or whatever comes in later, our response is, well, you know, go fill out these papers and pay your money and maybe you'll get in the public hearing list someday. I'm not sure that we're being completely fair to everybody by basically cutting it off with this list of eighteen now and then telling the other people they've got to go through an awful lot of effort to get.
One other, one other possibility of how another rezoning might be initiated would be for somebody, neighborhood, individual, to bring a petition to the council and to ask the council to initiate a rezoning of a certain area or a certain neighborhood. That's, that's, that's another, another way that it can happen.
Okay, yeah, I would feel more comfortable in a sense. I have mixed feelings about it because I think we really need to do this, but I'd be a little more comfortable delaying the finalization of this list for a while and letting the word stay out there for a while that, you know, we in fact are considering this because I think there are a lot of people that don't even recognize that it's, that it's going on.
Dr. Pasquini and then Sanderson.
I don't mind other people having other areas to the list, but I don't want to delay this one any longer because we delayed it already since February and it's taken one, six months to come back to us. So I think we ought to go with this list. If there are other parcels, perhaps the one that the mayor mentioned, that we need to consider on a different date. The other thing is, the parcel that the mayor mentioned, wouldn't that fall into the gray area? The so-called defined gray area that the planning board's using in this document?
Well, I can't say for certain because the, the planning board hasn't considered that. What, if you add that area, then that would be on this list and would go to the planning board along with the other seventeen to their meeting in October and so they'd be making a recommendation to you that would come to you at the public hearing.
What was that again? It appears that, to me, that it is in the gray area because it doesn't, I'm going to have to go back and fumble through this language here, but it doesn't meet with what's designated on the land use plan. Is that how they define what was in the gray area?
There were. My best description, I think, of the gray area, the gray areas that the planning board identified, were those areas where we, the staff, went to the planning board and said, we think that here is, here are properties that are, that carry a zoning designation that is different from what the land use plan calls for. And therefore, it would be, it would seem appropriate to consider the, to consider rezoning these properties to make them conform to the land use plan. And for most of the areas of planning that we brought, of those that we brought to the planning board, they said, yes, put that on the public hearing calendar. Then there were these half dozen properties that they said that might, those properties might be zoned in a slight, slightly inconsistently from the land use plan, but for those properties, we're not sure that land use plan, we're not, we're not sure we're comfortable with what the land use plan says and we'd like to talk about that and discuss that a little further. And so they asked that the rezoning of those particular half dozen properties be delayed.
Several, several factors, excuse me, Dr. Pasquini. That particular area is, at the present time, as you know, undergoing extraordinary pressures for change in all of its sides due to, primarily due to the coming, very rapid coming on of the fifteen five oh one four laning, in which the planning process, the town has already played a major role in advancing, or will advance, a million dollars to stimulate that planning. And it is true that on just about every side of that particular interchange that will be there very soon, I hope very soon, we have to make some serious decisions regarding these properties. And as you know, right now, they're just kind of sitting there waiting for something to happen. And I've thought that, and I think that Roger thinks and the manager and I had talked it over at some length, that we feel that we should get this particular piece in the process at least and begin looking at it. We're not proposing a really rapid solution. The chances are, we'll not come up for any final disposition until after the first of the year. But to get it kind of lost in a crack down there is going, could very well be extremely costly to us. Things are moving with various developers and their wishes, with the bridge that has just been completed, with the coming of the Duke Power facility and the, very short, we're going to be very quickly confronted with that interchange. And I don't like to see this particular piece dangling, kind of left there in the middle of everything with half of it is RCD on the backside next to the creek and its own residential. And I'm not sure that that is a viable way to leave it. And therefore, that reason, I was just requesting the council to append it to the list of the seventeen. I concur that perhaps there are many others that should be added, but I also concur that time is of the essence in, in moving this, what we already have along if we possibly can. Yes?
I don't have any problem adding that one to the list. In fact, I would like to add some more to the list. I have a little problem that the planning board has asked us now again to delay more rezonings. And if I look at the list that they say falls in the gray area, one that I have particular concern about and I had some residents call me, deal with lots on the south side of old Durham Chapel Hill Road that are presently zoned commercial. If we don't make that zoning change now, there could be a hamburger stand adjacent to a neighborhood and those lots are not deep enough to really provide the kind of buffer that would be desirable. It doesn't seem to me that the area on Sage Road behind Brendles, that why we, why do, does the planning board need to put off discussion of rezoning from R. four to R. three? That seems to me not a tremendous difference. I would like to just go ahead and put, amend the resolution to add the areas that were deleted, those four at least.
On page six. Well, we had, the original had seventeen and I proposed the addition of one. You're proposing?
Changes. Let me ask Roger if you have any problem with that, Roger, to having the council...
You're next, Mrs. Smith.
...consider these at the, at the time we consider all the rest of the property.
Your, your direction, please.
But, I mean, as far as the staff, does that pose any problem for you?
Well, if we, if you, if you add those, those six more in, we'll, we'll have them ready for the public hearing.
Mr. Smith, I believe.
I have been concerned about number one statement that is made on the first page that says zone, make it, to make zoning consistent with the land use plan. And yet we have on number three, a single lot. on number three, a single lot on Estes Hill that we are rezoning. Now, to me, that, to zone one lot in an area as big as Estes Hill, would not be making it consistent with the land use plan. I don't see how that one lot would make that difference. Now, why do we have one lot from R1 to R1A in that area? What about the rest of it?
I don't care what the request is. This, to me, is spot zoning, if you want to see a spot zoning. When you go in an area as big as Estes Hill, and zone one lot different from the rest of it, and all of its residential, that, to me, is strictly spot zoning. And I don't see, I don't see why that one lot would make that much difference. That's the first question. My second question, and you can answer all of them at the same time, one of the problems, of course, that we have is we like to, as far as possible, control, manage growth, and at the same time, in managing growth, we ought to be concerned with the traffic situation that exists and that we have at present. Now, we are zoning Colbert-Smith Level intersection from R4 to an R2. No, that's not the one. 15-501 Dogwood Acres Drive from an R1 to an R2, which, to me, we're creating more of a traffic hazard, because we are putting more, we're allowing more density development in that car. To me, that does not make sense with, in keeping with the situation that exists today out there. If we are really, you know, just that intersection, we, how much, how much land in that intersection are we talking about? There's a tremendous amount of land in that intersection.
If I can answer those two questions--
Yes, sir. Roger, if you will.
The answer to the first question about the, about the single lot, and really, all of these, we're not making a recommendation to you at this, at this time about whether or not we're recommending to you that these properties be rezoned or not. This is the recommended list of properties that would go to the public hearing. I fully expect that the recommendation of either the staff or the planning board or both might indeed be to, a negative one on some of these, for, probably for some of the very same reasons that you're bringing up. So we're not, we're not, in this memorandum, we're not recommending to you that you rezone these properties. We're recommending to you that you, that these be included on the list that will be considered, at which we'll make a recommendation at a subsequent time.
Who is the proposed zoning? Is that a request from the owner?
Yes.
Or is it what? Yes, a request from the owner is not--
Is that the norm property, Roger, that he's referring to, the single lot?
Yes. Answer your second question on Dogwood Acres Drive, the, again, we're not yet making, making the recommendation about whether, to you, about whether we suggest that you approve that or not, but we think that that, that consideration of that request is appropriate. It's, the amount of land we're talking about there is something under five acres. I don't know exactly what the figure is, but it's a reasonably small amount of land.
Further questions?
I would like to add, are we gonna keep the gray area? What happened to your-- I didn't make a motion. You didn't make a motion. Okay. I would like to add something to the gray area to be looked at, if that's possible. And it is lots eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, something. It's on, right behind Rosemary Street, and Pritchard Avenue splits it, and it's where there's a jog in the town center line. The town center line goes along behind the first row of houses that face Rosemary Street, and then, all of a sudden, at a certain lot, it jogs and goes back another lot. And I'd like for them to look at that, to see if perhaps it could be moved up to just the one lot deep on Rosemary Street.
Uh-huh.
Okay?
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Back to us, could we have a recommendation from the staff as to the number of nonconformities that this zoning would create?
Yes, please, sir.
We need a motion, really, of Dart, Dave, if R, Julie, anybody.
I move the manager's recommendation with the addition of all the gray areas and all the other things, and all the good ideas that people have and that want to be considered on the council here, so that we can move along. And I want to commend the staff for their dealing with the issue that Mr. Smith and I have hammered on them a number of times about, which is making sure that we have a workable procedure to notify people whose lots will be made nonconforming by some of the requests of their neighbors and others, and what might be involved in that. So I'm glad to see you've taken care of that.
Is there a second? Discussion is in order on--
Maybe agree, Dave.
All of the, all of the good things have been put in one motion. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, carry. Status support on--
Can I ask you a question first?
Yes, please.
While you're there. What are the options available to come out of this? I mean, we've got a motion that has current zoning and proposed zoning. Now, does that mean the only options that can come out of the public hearing, or what we, what we do after the public hearing, is to either adopt the proposed zoning or leave it at the current zoning? Or can we adopt other zones for those? What kind of restrictions?
At the public hearing, we wouldn't do either one.
No, no, I know, but if we have a public hearing, then we're limited in what we can adopt, and that's what I'm trying to find out.
Can't make it in a strict, but we can make it--
You're right, but some of these are upzonings and some of them are downzonings.
I know.
Not clear to me.
We have at least those two options, and as to some other zoning other than the one that's called for, we'd have to take a close look at what that proposal is and how that compares to the zoning that was originally advertised. Does it include additional uses that were not included? Does it exclude certain uses? If the advertisement included the proposed use, then it would be available, but if it did not, then we could not, we wouldn't have that option without having another public hearing and another advertisement. Shall we go to offices institutional and then zone it commercial?
So you're saying you cannot zone it more, you cannot zone it a higher intensity use?
It's not, it's not simply a matter of one linear scale, Dr. Warner. There are uses that are not in one zone that are in the other, whether it's a, whether you would call it a higher or lower zone, really, it doesn't completely define the specifics in every case. You'd have to look at every situation, see whether the uses that would be allowed by the proposed zone were the same ones as the advertised zone or not.
Right, but that would seem to restrict us to the proposed zoning.
Or to not act.
Right, so you're saying we don't have--
With the exception, I think you could, for example, if you advertised to zone something R1A, and it was currently R2, you could zone it R1.
Yeah, that's an easy one.
Okay.
Right. But I'm concerned about some of the, you know, the things where we're going, OI1 to mixed use--
Well, if there are uses that would be allowed in, that are not in the zone you've advertised for, then I don't think that the law would allow you to zone it to that without going back through the public hearing process.
Okay. Is it possible, then, to, can we advertise this in a more, I don't know, open-ended way? So it would be possible for us to, after the public hearing, pick an option that is not on the list, in a broader sense?
I'll look into that question.
Yeah.
Do we have a status support on the tree ordinance by the manager?
Yes. The, you asked us to let you know what we're doing and how things stand on the tree ordinance, and that's what this memorandum does. We wanted to highlight for you that there are two products that are going to be forthcoming from this work with Dr. Perry from the NC State School of Forestry. First of the products is going to be a draft set of provisions for consideration by advisory board, town advisory boards, and then you. The intent of these provisions is to put practices in place to help assure the identification and survival of key vegetation when properties are being developed. Those provisions might take the form of proposed amendments to the development ordinance, or changes to the design manual, or changes to administrative practices, or any, any number of those. All of those are being looked at. The second task is going to be to review Chapel Hill's approach to management of trees in general, and not just thinking about the development process, but making some, the consultant will be making some recommendations to us about what other directions might be fruitful for us to move in, in terms of looking at the more active management of trees and public and private properties, working with the utility companies. In both of these tasks, the work is going to focus very heavily on conservation of soil as one of the, as one of the key determinants to whether vegetation survives or not, both during construction and after construction. So that's the direction in which we're moving. We will be bringing the consultant and his work to the planning board in November, and have a target of bringing the consultant and his work to your meeting on January 25th to have him both present to you what he has done and discuss these matters with you.
Any questions? Sandresian, Dr. Gashov.
Roger, I want to understand exactly what the scope is of this. Is this actually a tree ordinance as such, or are you proposing administrative changes that might accomplish the same goals?
We're looking at both, and I'm just, I'm just not sure yet which is likely to be the most--
Well, what I want to see is, I've got all the components of this. You're gonna deal with soil conservation during construction, you're going to require some mapping of specimen trees in the development review process, you're gonna be talking to utility companies, and then you will see that significant trees are identified and saved if development occurs. Is there any program dealing with street trees, for example, that are actually now in the town's right-of-way?
That's one of the, one of the areas in which he's going to be making recommendations to us, is what we should be doing about street trees.
There's a lot of interest in this, and I don't know that I would want to propose this tonight, but several citizens have said to me that they would be interested in working with the town on a program such as Hillsborough's had, that, where they've had a tree committee that has been appointed committee of the town board, and has been very successful. And I think sometimes, in order to raise awareness of this kind of thing, it's useful to have a citizen committee, so I think maybe it's something we could consider.
Yes. An example of that, of where that's been successful, Dr. Perry has, we were talking to him about an inventory of, doing a town inventory of significant trees, and what we're, the, paying a consultant to do that would probably cost anywhere from five to 10 times the amount of money that's in this contract to do it. But he was suggesting that one of the things that's worked successfully in other communities is to enlist local environmental groups and volunteers in that, in that kind of an effort. So I would expect that that focus on those kinds of ideas is gonna be included in his recommendations to us.
Gashov.
Roger, in part two of the work, specifically the management of private trees, could you give me an example of what might be entailed with that?
I can, I can offer one example that we've looked at, that of management of private trees that I don't think is a very good idea.
Well, let's hear one you think is a good idea.
I think I'd rather wait to answer that, and the, that's partly what, what he's gonna be working with us on, is to be making some suggestions to us. And it might be that the suggestion that comes to us and to you is that we not do anything about regulation of trees on private property. It might be that, certainly in some communities, some communities have ordinances where there is a permitting process, where trees of a certain type or caliper can't be removed without a permit or a death certificate.
I hope that's not what you have in mind here, and I would strongly discourage that direction if that is what you're talking about in the management of private trees.
It's certainly not, not what I have in mind, and the kinds of, the experience of other communities with that, with that sort of device is not particularly good, and so, but we'll be reporting on all of that to you.
Thank you for this update report. Mr. Pasquini just stated that he'll be glad when this election is over, and I will too, because we have this date here as a target date. I've had many questions from Citizen Action, when we were gonna get along with this tree ordinance, so now we do have something in hand, the target date, when we come back with the council. Thank you.
I see someone who would like to speak. Could you please come forward, Ms. Cooperstein?
I'm Claire Cooperstein, as most of you know, local issues chair of the Sierra Club. I'm Claire Cooperstein, local issues chair of the Sierra Club. I came before you this summer with my concerns about a tree ordinance, and I am absolutely delighted at the directions I see it going. It seems to be, you seem to be seriously looking at everything that we were concerned about. However, I am very disturbed about the slow, about the calendar, because it would seem that we wouldn't even be looking at a public hearing till nine months after I came before you this summer, a year after you hired an expert. And I would just urge you to feel a sense of urgency about this, and to try to push that calendar ahead, because once a tree is gone, it's gone. You cannot put it back. You can put a stick in the ground and wait 20, 30 years, and then maybe you'll have it back. So that what is happening now with this tremendous rush of development that we have scares me, and I really want to see Chapel Hill continue to be the green oasis in the triangle that it has been, and we're all very concerned. I would offer the manager, Roger, anyone, the resources of the Sierra Club, where we do have experts, and not myself, on this subject. And I've called a couple who have said, yes, they would be willing to lend a hand and give any advice or so forth. One thing I'm concerned about, and that is this business about private trees as opposed to public trees. I presume that when you say private trees, Roger, you are referring to trees on land that is a private residence, because I can just see, if I was a smart lawyer, I could just say, "That's all right, you just leave the trees the way they tell you to, and then as soon as it's my private property, in commercial lands." So there has to be some kind of way of preventing that from happening, because if I were a lawyer, that's the first thing I would advise, some commercial development that wanted to be treeless so it could be seen to go. Thank you.
Any questions to Ms. Cooperstein? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll take you up on that expertise. I saw the manager write a note. Next item is resolution authorizing release of the old police building. Actually, it is really the old town hall.
Oh, right.
And we really ought to get that straight. To the Interfaith Council for Shelter for the Homeless and for Kitchen Facilities, R3, manager recommends adoption. The Reverend Rich Edens has asked to speak in this regard. Would you go to hear him now?
Only if there are questions. I have no need to speak.
Then move, it's settled, our discussion on R3. You have the contract, proposed contract before you, Dr. Pasquini. You have the contract, proposed contract before you, Dr. Pass Queen.
The Reverend, if I could ask you one question.
Sure.
Are you still looking at sites?
We've been, we're open to looking at all sorts of sites, and we don't see this closing that out.
But have you continued to look at sites?
We looked at a site, in fact, today.
And was that, where was that site?
And that was near the present police building.
Was that a satisfactory site?
No, because it would split, it would continue to split the program. We didn't see that the kitchen facilities could be placed in that, in that area without creating, without radically changing the kitchen program.
But it would serve as a shelter adequately?
It could serve as a shelter, but that would get us back to the same problem that we're trying to get out of now, and that is having to run two separate facilities. Because that draws down our volunteer strength.
Thank you. Oh, I do want to continue because this is an issue I feel that I need to say something about. For about six years now, I know Dave Taylor will attest to this, I've been wanting to sell that building. And we kept it, and we kept it. And I have yet to see a use for that building that was very prosperous until right now. And now, this new arrangement is being proposed. I still feel that that building should be sold and it should be developed as commercial property if we can't find a use for it within the town. And from the different bond referendums, I can see now that those options aren't being considered for that particular building. So I have some problems with this lease. I have, I think it's a matter of expedience that this building be approved for this use right now. And other than having regrets about that right now, I can see that it's going to proceed because I think I'm the only one on the council that feels that way. However, I'm glad to see that in the lease, there is a 120-day cancel provision. So if a new site's found, be it the town or a private citizen or a group within the town, that some arrangements can be made and we can move on with doing something about this building that's in our vital downtown area, an area that I've heard many people say it needs to be revitalized. And we can go ahead and do something with this building to make it a contribution to the town and the community.
Dr. Gashow?
I have a question also for Reverend Edens. In the arrangement that's proposed here, the shelter for the homeless and the kitchen facilities that you're merging, do you see that as serving the same population or two different populations? I've, a lot of people have been discussing this with me.
Two different and the same. In the sense that the, the kitchen clientele are not all shelter clientele, but most of the shelter clientele have a meal at the kitchen.
So a lot of the.
For example, at six in the morning, when the shelter clientele is, leaves the shelter, many of them go down to the present kitchen for breakfast. And some, some end up there at lunch, but few, but not as many, because many of our shelter clientele are working and are not there at that time.
But many of the kitchen clientele don't necessarily use the shelter.
Exactly. Most of the kitchen clientele does not use the shelter.
And most of them perhaps are not working also? Is that, is that right?
That I can't answer exactly.
Further questions to Reverend Edens? Further comments on the motion, R3, authorizing the lease? All those in favor of authorization say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The vote is eight to one. It passes. Thank you. Item nine, resolution regarding procedures for considering requests for proposals and performance agreements for cultural events and visitor information services, R4. Manager recommends adoption. Do I hear a motion? Then moved and segmented, discussion is in order on R4. Item nine, Mrs. Andreson and then Mr. Smith.
I just want to say, I think this is a great idea to have the Parks and Recreation Commission review, review these things.
Mr. Smith?
I guess my concern was whether or not the, 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 the Chamber of Commerce, somewhere it would be involved in some of the, the work for visitors' information. Was that considered, Mr. Manager, in connection with the, the Park and Recreation Commission? But it's my feeling that they, they work more or less with visitors than the Parks and Recreation Commission would, and somewhere along the line, maybe they ought to be involved.
Okay. Mr. Smith? Our thought was that the Parks and Recreation Commission would be the group that would develop the policies, procedures, and recommend to you how we go about allocating these funds, would receive proposals and make recommendations to you on those proposals. I see the chamber as being one of those groups that submits a proposal for money. And so therefore, I think it would be more appropriate to have Parks and Recreation handle it, because I think the chamber is going to make, make a request for money.
Mr. Howes and Ms. Bestin?
I just want to note, in connection with the assignment of this responsibility to Parks and Recreation, that it is, it is common in other places, or it has been done in other places, to set up a separate board that, that actually expends these funds and oversees their use. It seems to me that where that's done, it tends to become much more of a promotional kind of activity than I believe this council and our community is really interested in doing. And so I think the assignment to the Parks and Recreation Commission is an entirely appropriate one. They clearly have a much broader view than tourist promotion and wider range of interests. And I think we're likely to get really good, solid input from them. I do think that the council ought to commit itself, though, to review the question of how this is done over time. It's something that could be done in accord with our usual meetings and with occasional meetings with these boards and commissions. They may find themselves uncomfortable with the role, and we may find that they're not doing it the way we'd like to do it. So it's just something we ought to be mindful of as we go forward on this.
Questions?
Jonathan said a lot of the things I was thinking, and I guess the only other thing I wondered was, will this be unduly burdensome to the commission? Do they have a lot to do already? I have that feeling.
Well, obviously, they have a lot to do. But we did meet with them and met and discussed this issue with them, and they were enthusiastic about accepting this as a new challenge for them. And in particular, where you got here, visitor information and cultural events, they're probably a good middle-of-the-road group between those two concepts of visitor information and cultural events. And so they're enthusiastic about assuming this responsibility. And I agree with Mr. Howes, I think after a few years, we ought to step back and review it and see how it's working, just as you did a couple of Saturdays ago with the Human Services Advisory Board. You stepped back and took a good-hearted look at what they were doing and discussed those issues with them.
I observe that Dave Maynor, who is the president of the chamber, is in the audience. I just wonder, Dave, if you had any word or two on this subject that you might wish to state at this time?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I didn't come prepared to speak on this issue, but I would agree with Mr. Taylor that the appropriate, and we, I think, in speaking for the chamber, we would support what the council is trying to do. We would be coming, as any other group, looking for cultural or visitor services funds to the town and make a request along with anybody else. I can say, it's too early to go into any detail. We're in the very early stages of working with some other, trying to build some coalitions with some other very prominent organizations in town that are somewhat involved in some types of visitor services now. So we hope that we can come to you at a future date with some proposals that you will find very attractive in this area. And it is something we very much want to work with you on.
Thank you. Any questions directed to Mr. Maynor? Thank you very much. Was there further discussion on the resolution of R4? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Ordinance prohibiting storage in the town of nuclear weapons and waste from producing nuclear weapons, ordinance O1, manager recommends adoption.
Never one.
Then moved and segmented, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carried. Resolution declaring October 5 through 11 to be National Community Health Center Week, R5. Is there a second?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carried. We now have the consent agenda with the exception of item C, which has previously been passed. And any that need to be held back for the, for the moment? Is there a motion to adopt R6 in total? Is there a second? Discussion. All those in favor of R6 say aye. Opposed? Carried. Item 13, designation of delegate and alternate to the North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual Meeting, November 15 through 17. Mr. Howes, who care to comment on that as to how we should proceed?
I don't know who is planning to go. I will be there and I'll be the presiding officer at the business meeting, which is what is of an interest here. And so I would hope someone else would be designated as the voting delegate.
I'd like to recommend Pass Queen.
Nominate Nancy Preston, that she's going to be attending as our delegate.
You plan to go? Is it agreeable, we nominate Nancy as delegate? How about an alternate?
I can serve as the alternate.
Well, John is there. You want to serve as alternate?
Yes, sir.
You want to serve as alternate?
If you're going to be there, you ought to serve as alternate.
Then Nancy is, if it's agreeable, we will name Nancy as the delegate and Julie as alternate. Is there a motion to name by acclamation? There's a second. All those in favor say aye. You are claimed. There is now a request to go into executive session for property and litigation matters? Will we be returning, Mr. Manager?
As usual, we do not anticipate returning.
It would be appropriate for the table to break down at this point.
Thank you. The regular meeting is adjourned at this point.
She was looking for a motion.
Well, we, I thought.
The Chapel Hill Town Council meetings are brought to you by a grant from Carolina Cable, The Village Companies, and the Town of Chapel Hill.